I don't know.
Hello, Mr. Reeves.
Hey, Jim. How are you tonight?
I'm just wonderful. Looks like we're the only two alone.
I move with Jarn.
Can y'all hear me?
Oh, we missed our opportunity, didn't we?
I think we did. Maybe we're...
I'm trying to get there.
There's Mr. Farley.
Where is he tonight? Are you on the desert or in space or beach? Where are you tonight, Mr. Farley?
Now, can y'all see me?
Yeah, I can see you fine.
Great. Now things are...
There you go.
I am tired of hot weather. I am tired of hot weather.
I think we're all tired of that.
Yeah, Ben, what is the temperature there?
Right now it's 22 degrees right where I'm at.
I'd have to feed cows, so I think I'll... I don't want it that cold.
I can't figure why I'm still sweating though.
All right. I've got mute off, but how do I get my picture up there? Start video. You ever seen that? Okay. Well, let's hit the start of video and see. Hi, self-view. I don't know.
Hi, self-view, no.
Oh, here we go. Now, I'm not up there yet.
He may not have energy. Oh, no.
Well, I got it on, yeah.
I thought there's gonna be mute on your picture.
Well, it'll only be on mine, so I could...
Okay.
Steve, can you hear me?
Yes, I don't know who you are.
It's Tommy. It's Tommy.
Yeah, I can hear you, Tommy. I can't see you.
I'm not able to get my picture up.
Well, we're better off.
I should have known. I should have known.
Sorry.
You made my wife's night.
There we go.
Steve, can you see me?
I can. I see you.
Our DSL went out down here, and I don't... Skip and I hadn't figured out how I'm connected, but I'm picking up somebody's Wi-Fi, I guess.
I'm still in the office, so I got pretty good Wi-Fi here.
Our phone line and DSL went out down here, but I don't know why it's working. How are you, Mr. Norton and Mr. Farley?
I'm doing great now, Mr. Holsby.
Doing well, sir. Doing well.
Darren Glenn's in the Oval Office.
I believe it is.
I believe he is.
So, did y'all get any rain today?
Did you talk to me, Tommy?
Yeah. Y'all getting any rain today?
Yeah, we got a half inch.
My goodness. Good for y'all.
Glenn, still may appear.
There you go.
I'll ask Bama for one. He said he'd give me a couple. I'm waiting for the Secret Service gun tackling.
Commissioner Farley looks like he's chilling.
As I told him earlier. I am tired of the cold hot weather. I am sick of hot weather.
I understand.
Hunter Winfrey.
Join the meeting.
All right, folks. How's everybody doing?
Doing good.
Doing great.
Great, great.
I think we're missing... Who we missing? Robert Seals, then we've got Chuck Dacus. So, we got a couple more minutes to wait. Up here in my office, I've got several folks. Miss Sue Cover's off to my left. Dwayne Doughty is here, Mr. Commissioner Larry Watkins, Commissioner Ray Seals, Public Works Chairman Hank Frank, and Commissioner David Lillard. And I expect Dr. Connie Smith from the schools to slide in here before too long. So, I'll tell you what, real quick. Here's who I got in my room.
Why didn't we just do this at the Justice Complex?
He won't go there. So, anyway, I'm gonna put myself on mute a second, and I got a couple more housecleaning things to do here, then we'll get started shortly. Folks, I've got a phone number here online that, I'm not sure who it is, the 901 area code and last three digits, five, six, one. Who is that?
It's Hunter Winfrey.
Oh, Hunter, okay, I just need him to know who I'm talking to.
Did you get a text, Mayor, from Robbie Seals? He's not able to get in.
Okay, let me just say.
He just sent me a text. Said that the password in his packet is not letting him join the Zoom.
Terry, you might mention to him to make sure he checks, it's the video password versus the phone password, they're two different passwords.
How much of a loop?
You know, you're getting above my pay grade there, but I will try to text that to him.
Yes, sir. Which way are you trying to get in, the computer wise or the phone wise? Are you Mr. Norton, Mr. Farley? Really? It won't let you in? You got? Alright, tell you what, which email are you, you looking in? I'm gonna send you another, another invite. Okay, let me just, and it's probably gonna come from a personal email, ray dot Tyler, so comes in someplace funny. R E S I L L S, at eighteen, ten. I gotta check inbox and see if that does any better. Folks, I believe everybody's here, it's seven o'clock, and we'll go ahead and get started. For those who, just, just for informations, and because this is being recorded, not only by Zoom, but also on YouTube, so there may be some folks out there in the public work, watching it, that just zip in, the address is on our website. Just so everybody knows, with me here in my office is Ms. Sue Cover, our county clerk, Mr. Wayne Doughty, Superintendent Public Works, Mr. Larry Watkins, our commissioner, Mr. Ray Seals, Commissioner, Mr. Hank Frank, Chairman of Public Works, Mr. David Lillard, Commissioner, and Dr. Connie Smith, our Superintendent Schools. And we'll go ahead and get started. At this time, we'll go ahead and call Roe. Ms. Sue's here, and she's asked me to, let me call it, call it, we already got it. Just for the record, I'm gonna call your name, please, say present. Commissioner Dyke, Charles, Chuck Dacus?
Present.
Ben Farley?
Here.
Willie German?
Present.
Goodrow?
Present.
Gary Leggett?
Here.
Nick Lillard?
Yes.
Sylvester Logan?
Present.
Jim Norton?
Present.
Bob Oglesby?
Present.
Tommy Perkins?
Present.
Kevin Powers?
Present.
Dale Reeves? Commissioner Reeves, let's see, let me help you get your phone on.
He's muted.
There he is. There he goes. Commissioner Reeves?
Present.
Okay. Steve Reeves?
Present.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Present.
Ray Seals? Robert Sills?
Present.
Bill Walker?
Present.
Larry Watkins?
Present.
We have eighteen present, no absent. Next item on my agenda today is invocation. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Walker to give us a short, short invocation, if you don't mind.
Alright, let us pray. Lord like thank you for all the many blessings you've given, bestowed upon us. I pray to be with and watch over our men and women serving in the military, whether it be at home or abroad, as they go about their duties protecting and our freedoms. I pray for our police, our EMS, our medical workers, and our firefighters, as they go about doing their duties in this time of trouble. I pray to be with this great country and our leaders, and that you would guide them during this time, as they're making decisions. I pray for your guidance for this body and the mayor, as we go about making decisions for this county, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
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 Folks, I don't have a flag, but if you were to join me and recite recitation of Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance? America. Folks, now I appreciate you doing that, the, the scene was a little out of sync, but the sentiment was there. Um, next item on the agenda tonight, we don't have any comments from any, um, audience members at this time, we do have minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections to be made? And this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Powers moves to approve the minutes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Reeves, second.
Okay. One second, please. Alright, Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett? Commissioner Leggett?
Who?
Leggett?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Lillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Sills?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Okay, eighteen in favor, none against, that passes. Uh, next item on the agenda tonight is, uh, one second, please, resolution to augment solar power regulations and connect and correct R P A D setbacks. In the Development Committee, and I'm gonna default to Commissioner Farley in just a second, there was discussion about sending this back to, discussion and recommendation to send this back to the Planning Commission for some adjustments and to break this apart. Commissioner Farley?
Uh, yes, sir, the, the Development Committee, after discussion, it was decided that it would be best to break it into three parts. Uh, give the public to come before a in-person meeting and comment on it to the Planning Commission and the, uh, committee and the commission at a later time. Uh, Mr. Pittner agreed to it, thought it was a good idea, we voted to recommend, well, we voted, we thought, we voted to send it back to the Planning Commission to have it broken into the three different parts, so we could discuss it in three different times. Uh, but somehow, it's on this night's agenda, so, um, I, I make a motion or a recommendation that we table it until after the Planning Commission has seen it, determine if it was correct the way we wanted to do it, send it back to the, but, the Development Committee, and bring it back before the commission.
Okay, do we have a second to that? Alright, Commissioner Bill Walker, second to that, and, okay, okay. One second. Folks, let's say, since this came from the Planning Commission, the full commission has a vote to do something with it, that's the reason you've got it, and for a motion to move forward. And any, and the commission cannot change a resolution without the Planning Commission doing something with it, they have to prove that the Planning Commission does, unless you want to send it back, and then if they disagree, it comes back to you, so they can override that vote. Anyway, that's the process, and that's the reason you're voting on this right now. So, this is another roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Hi.
Commissioner Farley?
Cat, uh, Mayor, a yes vote sends it back to the Planning Commission or back to the Development Committee?
Sends it back to Planning Commission, that's what, as I understood it, that's what your motion was.
Correct, correct, I vote yes.
Okay, Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Hi.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Hi.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Sills?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, eighteen in favor, none against. Uh, next item on the agenda tonight, election notary publics, those are in your packet, are there any, uh, and it has been reviewed and approved by the clerk, are there any questions on that? Commissioner? And Commissioner Larry Watkins seconded. Again, this is a roll call vote. We're gonna be here a while, folks. Uh, Commissioner Dacus?
Hi.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Kevin Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Hi.
Commissioner Bryce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Sills?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yeah.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Motion passes, eighteen in favor, none against. Next item on the agenda tonight is election of board members. Uh, I put three names in nomination, and folks, just so that you can see which ones they are, give me one second. Three names you see at the, at the top, uh, excuse me, um, not the top, on this list, you guys see Mr. Eugene McFerran is currently on it, Mr. Nate Peterson's currently on it, and Mr. Ed Puyum is currently on it. Those are the three nominations I put in front of you. Uh, Mr. Alunchi is no longer there, and Mr. Uh, Mr. Dwight Smith unfortunately passed away a while back. But I'd like to put those three in nomination, and I am also, as we go through this, looking for two additional ones. I have had a couple of, of folks inquiries, I do need two more in the near future. So those are in front of you as nominations.
I'm making a motion. Three people there mentioned.
Okay, Commissioner Farley, second, and Commissioner Ray Seals, seconded. Roll call vote, Commissioner Dacus?
Uh, hi.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Hi.
Commissioner Rice?
Hi.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Sills?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yeah.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yeah.
Motion passes, eighteen in favor, none against. Uh, the next item on the agenda tonight is the, uh, open seat for district seven, position one vacancy. This is, uh, has come about by the, give me a second, let me stop the share, so I can get back to this. This has come about as the open seat that Mr. Walker has resigned in La Grange, and, uh, this is the first meeting that has, that we could appoint somebody. It has been advertised in the paper, anybody who used to be in it, uh, needed to go by the election commission, receive a letter, this person will serve until November, and then whoever runs and wins that race at that time will, will serve the remaining term until, I believe it's, um, August thirty-first in twenty-two. So, I had one gentleman, Mr. Jimmy Jordan, bring a letter, and he's the only name that ever see. Alright, Commissioner Larry Watkins put Mr. Jordan's name in nomination. Uh, since there's no other names, uh, this will be a roll call vote for that name.
Just, no, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Norton. Uh, I asked Mr. Jordan some time ago, when he called me to forward to me a resume, not, and he said he would through email, and I have not yet received that, and with all due respect, Mr. Jordan, I think it's only right that all the commissioners have something other than him qualifying for the position. Uh, I would like to have seen something prior to this.
Okay, um, I, I have not received anything, uh, he's been by the office once or twice to dis inquire, and I've told him so what the job entails. Uh, is Mr.?
Mayor.
Exactly, Mr. Reeves?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Reeves?
Yes, sir.
I've got Mr. Jordan here in my office, if, if anybody would like to, to ask him a question.
Well, I'll tell you what, uh, let me give him, it's Steve, if you don't mind, just give him a minute or so to start talking about himself, and then if there's any questions after that, we'll go on.
Okay. Okay, Mayor. Can y'all see him?
Yeah.
It's Jordan, I think, Mr. Jimmy, I think you, uh, you've got the floor, you'd like to talk to commissioners?
Well, if any of them got any? Well, if any of them got any questions, I'll be glad to do the best I can and answer it. I agree with the gentleman about the resume, I did not get it done in order to get it to him, but I'll be glad to answer any question from anybody.
Well, Commissioner Norton?
Yes, sir, Commissioner?
I, I think what I'm mainly interested in is because I don't, I, and I understand that you once upon a time was a county commissioner here.
Yes.
If I understand that correctly, what, what a little bit of research that I could do, I think I've discovered that.
Right.
I have not been able to, uh, have conversation with any of my constituents. Uh, I, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, in your previous history, what your voting record was and, uh, stuff like this. And when I get asked questions, I kinda like to have some, some way of answering it. And with all due respect to all of these county commissioners, I believe every one of them will talk highly of you, and I am not going to sit here and not talk highly of you. What I'm saying is, I just don't know. And I think that there needs to be a mechanism in place that prior to any appointments being made of this magnitude, we certainly should have something in front of us as responsible commissioners representing our constituents on where we stand with you. I hope you can understand what I'm, what I'm trying to say.
Yes, I understand.
So, uh, I would like to see going forward some form of mechanism in place other than, yeah, I know him, he's a pretty good guy. That, it seems to be, that's what's been happening here lately with all the appointments that's been going on. And I take this very seriously. Uh, I think my constituents are demanding that I take this seriously. So, Mr. Mayor, in the future, can we not put together some, uh, mechanism that, because I've only been here fifteen years, but I don't, I don't know Mr. Jordan. I don't know anything about Mr. Jordan. And I'm sure the rest of the county commissioners do know him. And what I have to rely on today, if this goes to a vote, is what my other county commissioners think. And that's just not responsible, uh, leadership to me, to my constituents. I, I think something should have been there, and I hope that this, this is something new that we can incorporate into our appointments, and I believe Mr. Goodrow has a question. Uh, yield.
Mr. Chairman, can you spell the gentleman's last name for me?
J O R D A N, Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
I've got the, hold on a second, let me. Yes.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing Jordan, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing Jordan, and I'm hearing Jordan.
Well, you're hearing a southern Jordan.
Okay.
Can I, can I speak to that? Mayor, can I speak to that?
Yes, sir.
It's spelled Jordan. But ever since I've been born, and my daddy, they've always called it Jordan in Fayette County, but it's spelled Jordan. So when I went to Champaign County to get a job, I answered the vote, Jordan or Jordan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Powers, his, his hands up, at least on the board, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, it's my understanding that all that's required for us as commissioners is to have, uh, a, an okay from the election commission as to whether he's qualified to serve, is that not correct?
That's it, I just gotta make sure that they meet the minimum standard, that's what we've done.
And then on top of that, he, in November, is whoever is planning on running, if he, it's whether it's him or anybody else, that they'll be elected on this presidential ballot to serve out the remainder two, of two years, correct?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Farley?
Make a nominated Mr. Jordan for the position that's taken.
We, we've already got one on, on the, on the floor, right, we just have him as a couple of questions.
Do you have a second?
Uh, we don't need one, but I'll take one if you want to put one there.
No, sir, I just called for a vote.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up or anybody asking for the floor, so this is a roll call vote. Uh, all those, I see, Commissioner Dakis, if you're.
Yes.
Vote yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves, Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Sills?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Jordan is elected eighteen to nothing, and that passes, uh, I will get with Mr. New, the now new commissioner, in the next day or two, and swear him in at his convenience. Uh, the next item on the agenda tonight, excuse me? Okay, next item on the agenda tonight, there's some financial reports in your packet, let's give official if you need those. Uh, mayor's office, I've just got a couple of things need to go over with you on. You remember this chronic wasting disease with the deer that we went through a lot last year? The state's finally gotten back with me a little bit, and they are moving forward extremely slowly on putting together a grant, but long story short, they're putting together a five hundred thousand dollar grant to install an incinerator at our landfill. Uh, it will not be in operation until January of twenty-one, which means for all practical purposes, it will be missing all of the deer season. Subsequent conversations with T D F R A A has assured me under no certain, uncertain terms that none of those deer will be buried in Fayette County. So, um, that's where we are, we're working out the terms of the grant, there's still back and forth since this is a little bit new to them to us also, and make sure all the details are correct, and then whenever I get it, I'll not only run in front of Mr. Ross, but run in front of y'all to make sure that there's no questions and the, and the uncertainty will cover that. Next month, we're gonna, uh, convene our property committee for the first time, if you remember, this is a committee that gets tax parcels that have gone through sale and nobody's bid on them. We have seven of them, uh, five are inside Oakland, and there's a caveat inside the law that says if there's an environmental or financial concern with the parcels that we can offer no bid, basically don't bid on, take them over. Five of those parcels, I'm making a recommendation, and I'll bring that in for the committee next month, that, that is the case with those. Two of the parcels, one's in Moscow, I believe, and one's in Somerville, that we should be able to get the landowners, uh, next door landowners and, and see if there's a purchaser there, and I, I don't see a problem with moving those back on the tax rolls in relatively short order. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is a, is, uh, so, if you got a few on the line somewhere, is, does he have anything for the sheriffs off?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, next thing is Board of Education, uh, Dr. Smith, anything you want to talk with, talk about?
Yes, well, Mr. Mayor and, uh, commissioners, thank you very much for, for having us here. Um, we're bringing our annual budget before you for your approval. Uh, we have, uh, three capital outlay projects and roofing projects that are one-time expenses, and we have, uh, work being done at the high school, some reconstruction work, that's a one-time expense. But, uh, we've been working closely with our good mayor and Charles to reconcile our numbers and revenue, and get everything up to, to date, and our school board met, uh, in a special call meeting on Monday, and we approve this budget for your consideration tonight. So we want to be, um, upfront and, um, close with you on our budget because we are opening school in a pandemic, and we'd like to get this approved, so we can move forward.
And Dr. Smith, while I got you here, you want to give us a summation where you think how your school's going to open, just sort of nutshell?
I'll be, yeah, I'll try to do that. This is the first time in my, I've been a superintendent three other times, and first time anybody's ever opened schools in a pandemic. Um, I'm very proud of our plan that the staff has put together, it is what we're calling the data-driven plan. We looked at the incidents of COVID in Fayette County on March thirteenth when we closed. We've analyzed every day the incidents from then until this week, and we have three times the incidence of COVID nineteen that we had when we closed. Uh, we're working with the C D, uh, the Department of Health officials, and we had a physician's call about two weeks ago. And so we're gonna err on the side of caution, and we, uh, proposed to our school board a plan that was unanimously approved. We're going back four and a half weeks in a virtual format, that means the teachers are at school every day teaching, kids will be at home every day, uh, learning. And then, four and a half week, uh, the day after Labor Day, we're hoping to open up schools, um, in something called a blended approach, and we'll have two days with a cohort of students on site, say Monday and Wednesday, and then a different group will come in on Tuesday and Thursday, and then each cohort will have three days of virtual learning. So we bought a new, um, a, a virtual program called Ed Menton, and we're training our teachers this week, we started yesterday, um, we're socially distancing. I apologize, I hope you can see me without my mask, and so, you know, I get fired for that, so y'all may have to pick me a job after this, but, um, we are, we feel very confident in our approach, we're trying to get the word out to parents, we give a weekly update every week, um, and we feel good about our decision. Um, we, uh, had a, a team of parents and teachers in, tomorrow I'm having a community meeting, uh, to kind of share a plan and get feedback from this community. But I want to say one thing about the Fayette County reception that I've gotten, everyone has been really welcoming and good. And so I'm an outsider, uh, but I love this community, so we just, uh, I'll be open for any questions, Mayor, that you have for me, we've got Dr. Diane Watkins is our chief financial officer.
And she's online.
And she's online, and she, you know, she's the brain, and I'm just the one that's willing all of that, so she'll answer the hard questions, but I just appreciate your consideration of our annual budget.
I would like to say that I will appreciate her being here. She, she has been a, a welcome to sight and on the scene here, and, um, and I'll, well, thank you very much for your help and everything and your expertise.
Can I, I have a question?
Hang tight, Commissioner Watkins, if you want to speak up if you want to talk.
Uh, well, you know, yeah. Uh, before it goes before the budget, the committee had heard nothing of this, we didn't even meet this one on education.
I'm sorry.
I mean, you know, where do we stand, we should have heard this before it comes before the budget.
We did have it, education, it wasn't last month, it was a month or four, and we did go over it, the numbers substantially hasn't changed that much. And the main part that we've got is the funding portion, and they, that's what they did yesterday, they didn't get their B P numbers until Thursday, Wednesday. Well, it, it, this time I got them out to y'all, but they got them at the end of last week. And then, if you remember last month, the reason we didn't pass it, we were waiting on that, and addition, and in addition to the sales tax number, now that number is again was sent out today also, uh, that was a very good number, um, and made everybody's sales tax look good, and the reason I bring that up is because half of their local funding comes from sales tax, so we're, we're in good shape on, on both of those, but as far as expenditure side, I don't think there's a lot of changes from which you've seen before, at least what I've seen. Yeah. But it has not, it is this month, yeah, I agree, it has not, it's not going from education.
Should have been approved first, you know, education.
Okay.
I mean, uh, for some reason, no, we feel like we were just being overlooked. Because it's our place to say that we are sending on to the budget with or without a recommendation.
Right.
And you, you go into budget without, uh, a recommendation from your committee.
Commissioner, Commissioner Goodrow, I believe you had your hand up at one time?
Yes. Uh, can the superintendent explain the virtual aspect that they're putting in place? And, um, how they are supplying, um, those underprivileged, if you will, with the tools to do the virtual aspect, how is that working?
Yes, sir, uh, we got some funds, uh, from E S R funds, the CARES Act, and we've put a lot of funds focused on our, our students who don't have tools. So we have a checkout system, we're, we're going through registration right now. I arrived about six weeks ago, so it's been a, it's been sort of a whirlwind, but we have plans for, for any student that doesn't have Wi-Fi or doesn't have a digital tool, we've done two surveys, so we're getting a, we're getting an estimate of how many we're gonna need. We're gonna check those out, uh, with an agreement, uh, for the parents. Um, and we'll have a, a, a laptop or a Chromebook, we'll have a hotspot if they do have Wi-Fi, and then we're gonna have buses, we're gonna have about ten buses, uh, that we equip with, uh, digital Wi-Fi that will drive around communities, from what I can tell, uh, we've got, uh, we need some digital help in Moscow, we need some in Roswell, and we need some, um, around Highway seventy-six. Uh, some people use Verizon, and that doesn't seem as well as A T and T in Fayette County. So we've been talking, the mayor helped us getting some conference calls with different, uh, vendors, and so that is our plan right now. Now, the virtual, uh, curriculum will be delivered by teachers who are on site with, uh, laptops, with cameras, will have different, uh, Google Docs approach or Zoom approach. They'll be interacting with students, there'll be some, uh, teaching and learning that is, uh, videotaped where if we've got students at home that taking care of the younger kids, and they need to use this at a different time between eight-thirty to three, uh, we're gonna have that accommodation. So, uh, this, this is a brave new world, and as a teacher, I've never taught like this. But right now, we're training teachers on online delivery of instruction. So there are a lot of moving parts to this right now, but we are, we are addressing each and every one of them.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Mr. Aaron, thank the rest of the commissioners also, uh, they're, the school's putting out a ton of documents, and I think they're trying to reach out to different communities, uh, I'm feel sure that they probably have some meetings forward, because there are going to be a lot of questions, and there's going to be a lot of answers that they're trying to find. So just please look at their Facebook, uh, subscribe to their email channels, and, and please pass that out to your constituents also, because I know that's where you're getting a lot of questions from. So, uh, we'll go on with the next item on the agenda tonight, uh, Public Works, Mr. Data, you got anything? All right, nothing tonight.
Got a question for Mr. Daddy.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Goodrow?
So we've got a place, uh, on Work Road where there is, uh, construction, it looks like they're gonna put in a new, um, new neighborhood. And on either side is the city of Oakland, and, um, of course, the road is ours, is the county's. Uh, the construction crew has, uh, built a drive, uh, across uh, the, the ditch there. But they didn't put a culvert in. And so with these rains, you're not gonna get the flow of water through there. Is this something that you can address with, uh, uh, Oakland? To get this taken care of, I just, I don't want to see, uh, flooding on Work Road again in that area.
Yes, uh, I'll check into it first thing in the morning, that's the first time I've heard about. Yes, uh, I'll check into it first thing in the morning. That's the first time I've heard about it, but, um, that's, that's been a, a tough situation for us, for us from the start. I've always felt like Oakland should take the ownership of Work Road.
Yes.
The houses on each side of us and all we have is the asphalt to take care of. And that's probably where a third of our complaints come from.
Yes, sir. This location, uh, would probably be pretty evident, but it's north of, I believe it's Riverdale Road, uh, that comes across work. Uh, and in addition, just north of that, uh, south of, uh, uh, Black Ankle is another neighborhood where I think I've discussed it with you before, where there is, um, flooding there where they have, uh, connected to Work Road. And I guess there's just not the drainers there that should be. And it's pooling up and it's, it's pretty bad hazard right there, yes. I mean, I, I can send you pictures again of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we get too far along, I wanted to make a comment on this. Personally on the committee, I mean, not on the education committee.
On the education? When, when we get there, I'll, I'll recognize you.
Okay.
But we're not at the education portion yet. But we will be there in just a second. All right, well, all right. All right. No, no other questions. We'll go ahead and move forward. Uh, Development Committee, uh, Commissioner Farley?
Oh, mine has been already handled. I have nothing.
Okay. Uh, next item is, uh, Commissioner, I mean, Health and Welfare, Commissioner Reeves?
Mr. Chairman, we met July thirteenth. Commissioners present, Leggett, Perkins, German, myself, Seals and Goodrow. Uh, we have very short agenda. Uh, we, uh, Director Miller did, uh, let us know that we had kind of unusually high number of calls, uh, last month. Uh, he, he thinks it's probably COVID-related, a lot of calls to the nursing home. Uh, we were without ambulances twenty-six times. Eight of those times we had someone waiting. So, uh, we continued to, to watch that. Uh, budget came within our, our expenditures, revenue came within budgets. And, uh, other than that, uh, that's all we had. So.
Thank you. Uh, Personnel Committee, Commissioner Lillard?
I don't have any comments or, uh,
Okay. Nothing on personnel. All right.
Excuse me, uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've got a question on, uh, on the property, um, for the animal shelter. Last month, last month it was approved to do a survey and a phase one environmental study. Once a written agreement, um, on the price of the property on Yum Yum Road was obtained. Now, what have we, that's been a month, have we come up with a price and where are we at on the study?
And we have not, I have not received the document back from the gentleman yet. I've called him twice and left a message, what, nine, um, some correspondence by email. So I'll probably have to drive over there and just name. I don't think there's an issue. I'm not sure if she's getting to him, following him through the cracks or what, but that's what I don't have that document that I need to move.
Okay. Can, uh, can we see about moving that direction?
I would like to have this done. So, I'm sorry. I would like to have already had this done. So yes, you've got my full cooperation with this. So, cause I can get, I can get that little piece of paper that says he's good at the price. Survey and start putting a contract together.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, next item is Education Committee.
Okay, I want to make some comments on that.
Who's, who's chairman?
I am. Dacus. We did not meet.
Okay. All right. I think Commissioner Lillard's got a comment or so. That's all right.
I think that'd be fine. Let him make a comment. We did not meet.
Okay. Yes, sir. Commissioner Lillard?
I, I came on board with this thing with a heart of pride on its school issues. And one of them was on this, on this committee. And, uh, when I got to the, got to the, the reality of the whole thing after I served on it. And I didn't, didn't want any more part, any part of it after that because it was so tied up with the state's rules and regulations on what we could do and what we couldn't do. And then the, then the, the reaction to the, everybody was revived in the schools and everything else. So I had a lot of sympathy for him. The chairman of the, the committee now, and I think I told him that, or something before he got on there as chairman of it. So if we just look at, look at him, we'll, what we do for him in his next round.
Okay, okay. All right. Uh, next item on agenda tonight is Criminal Justice, Public Safety, Commissioner Rice?
Chairman, the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee met on July fourteenth, uh, with, um, Commissioner Goodrow, Leggett, Perkins, Norton and Rice present. We reviewed the sheriff's, uh, monthly report and, um, also a renewal of the fire agreement between the county and the town of Somerville. We approved the, the, the new contract between Somerville and the county and passed that on to the Budget Committee. And that will come up in the Budget Committee report. That's all we had.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Next item on agenda tonight is Budget Committee, Commissioner German?
Yes, we met July the fourth, aim commissioners that were present were Rice, Steve Reeves, Logan, Dacus, Farley, Oglesby and German. We didn't have a lot in the minutes of them. We discussed a lot of the budget items. I'm sure we're gonna discuss some more tonight. And, uh, the only thing on the agenda that we have tonight is Somerville Fire Agreement, which you just heard, Commissioner Rice, they approved that. It was approved by the Budget Committee. I make a motion. We approve.
Second, Norton. And may and seconded by Commissioner Norton?
Yes, sir.
He gets, one second. Let me get, this will be roll call, so let me find right piece of paper. There we go. All right, uh, excuse me. Who made the motion first, please?
I did.
German. And who seconded, please?
Norton.
All right. All right. Uh, all, if you're in favor, vote yes. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Larry Watkins? Okay, motion passes eighteen in favor, none against.
All right. Our next item of business is County Clerk Deputy Two to Deputy One. Um, we didn't have a recommendation in the Budget Committee. From what I understand, uh, Ms. Sue Culver is probably gonna lose a deputy two in the near future. And is wanting to have some additional funds in her budget to hire someone that is already working for the county at a deputy one level that she would like to be able to get if that does come to pass. I think Ms. Sue is with us tonight. Our committee asked her to, uh, make that request. So if anybody's got any questions, we can ask her. Ms. Sue?
This is something I would like to do. Uh, the employee works for another office and for that reason, I'd, I'd rather, uh, not say who the employee is. Uh, she is a, a deputy one. Has, uh, more than twenty-five years with the county. Has a lot of experience with, um, very professional person. Uh, I think that you'll, uh, much needed spot in my office. And I would like to have the funds that if I had the opportunity, uh, which may come about in a couple of months. Um, I would like to have the opportunity to, uh, bring her in, uh, aboard in my office. And I, I think it, why isn't it? And I would like, it, it's a matter of about twenty-two hundred dollars, uh, a year. And I would like to, uh, have your permission and, and your cooperation to do.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sue?
I move we allow her to do it. Oglesby?
I'll second that, Norton.
All right, there is a motion on the table. There's a motion on the table. Uh, Commissioner Oglesby made it to allow it. And seconded by Commissioner Norton. You're in favor of this? Vote yes when your name's called.
I've got a question.
Commissioner Dacus?
If, if we allow this to happen, this, this particular person hadn't learned, hadn't earned this level in that office. Are we setting precedents that we don't really want to set? I don't know if what I'm saying makes sense, but this person's earned that position in another office. But she, they hadn't earned it in this office. Is that, does that make employees? I, I don't know. To me, it seems like it might be a little, we're setting a precedence. It might not be good.
He's asking you since they had.
Are these positions earned in, in a certain office?
Will that experience in another office translate to yours? Will they have to learn? And start?
They would have, they would have to be trained to do the work in my office.
So, so they would be starting out lower at a higher pay?
Well.
Am I not reading that right? In other words, that, that person in my view would be taking a position in your office at a beginning position. She'd have to be, or he would have to be saying, saying, I'm willing to move and start over.
Well, not, not really because she'd already be trained to handle money. She'd already began trying to deal with customers across the counter. And she's very professional and, and very good at that. Um, she would.
But she's still gotta be trained. But she's still got to be trained.
I would have to train her on our particular computer program. Yes.
Mayor?
Thank you.
You have a question?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I look, at first I looked at this kind of like Mr. Dacus then, but then I started looking around and realized all we're doing is what is called a sideways move in the corporation in the United States. People go from a, a certain level in transportation to the same level in production, or production goes to the same level in, in something else. So it's not really a motion. It's just a sideways move within the corporation. What I see it as. I, I don't have a problem with it anymore.
Okay.
I have a comment, Norton.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes, as far as setting a precedent, we did that last year. We allowed one person to come in and get a, a mighty fine raise. I believe she worked over in Soul Conservation. Then that door got open and somebody put their foot in it. We couldn't get it closed. Uh, we got clerks over in the, the court clerk's office that got promoted simply because they were doing a good job. And I argued against this then. But somehow it's coming up now. I'm all for it. Uh, you know what? That's our doing. We did it. We opened that door already. That's it.
All right. Commissioner Leggett?
Uh, how does this work out on our budget?
I'll just adjust that particular line item by the amount that you said is what's about two thousand, two, about two thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. It'll be that much more. On the number you see at the bot, at the top, it'd be a hundred and seventy odd thousand, add two thousand dollars more going home.
Okay. So it, it's not factored into the new budget? Or this will all be in the new budget here?
It will, it will, it will be put in the new budget. It is not in it currently.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Reeves?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One question. Where did the deputy one came, come in? Cause I thought it was a, Commissioner Farley said it was a sideways move, but I thought a deputy two was going to a deputy one position. I, I, I'm not following the math. There is a deputy one leaving Ms. Culver's office?
No, a deputy two.
Deputy, deputy two is, deputy two is leaving? Deputy two is possibly leaving, and that's the reason for this is going.
And then we have a deputy two moving in or wanting to move into that spot?
A deputy one.
A deputy one. Okay, I got you.
Little bit higher pay wants to move into that spot.
Okay.
You know the questions?
You said this deputy two is possibly leaving?
I don't. I don't think it's definite yet. There's some other circumstances going on, but I think the expectation is that it will probably happen.
So we're gonna put this in the budget, not knowing that it's gonna happen?
It will only, is it, is it gonna happen? I think, what? There you go.
It's sometimes going to happen, yes. But, uh, to be perfectly honest, I don't know where I stand right at this moment.
Is this something that should, should be dealt with when it does happen? Or we?
It, it could be, yes. It could be, it could be, we could wait. We could, uh,
I think, I think it might be best if we do that. I, I'd hate to. This will be setting a precedence too, and I don't know, uh, another precedence. I, I think it's important that a position become vacant before we feel it, fill it. Um, that just makes sense to me. I, I'm not opposed in, in principle with, uh, doing what you're asking. I, I'm just, I, I don't, I, I don't think this is the time to do it. Um,
You, you could be right.
So can, can we put this, can we table this until? Mr. Chairman, can we table this until we? Do we get a vacancy? Or we, or at least get a, uh, a letter of resignation?
I had a motion in a second.
Do you have a motion in a second there? Can you table it this time if somebody wished to?
I'd like to table it because it's just.
Short circuit, so I think you won't hold off on this for a month or month or six weeks? If at that time you think you're gonna have a resolution one way or another. Okay. Why don't, uh, you know, withdraw the motion? Okay, she's withdrawing the request. So if I could just withdraw the motions and then when this actually comes up, but I guess the same question will be coming back up at a later time.
Okay.
That, is that all right with the Commissioner Oglesby and Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, then. We'll move on past this then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Uh,
Mr. Mayor?
Which?
Leggett.
Leggett.
Leggett. Uh, can we send this through the Personnel Committee before it comes to the full commission the next time?
Yeah, well, the Personnel Committee only handles on the regs on everybody. It doesn't handle individual ones.
Okay.
This, and because Ms. Sue has the budget on her dealings, that's just where it falls. That's probably where that word should have gone. Well, I actually did go through that. But I have a feeling there'll be.
That's all we had, Mayor.
Okay. All right, folks. Now we get to what everybody came to meeting for tonight. Public, under new business, and we've got a budget that is, uh, has all the parts are in place. Under new business, and we've got a budget that is has all the parts are in place, and I'm gonna go over it real quick. And there's only a couple of them that I bet have individual votes, and after I go through this, if you're if you're comfortable with what I've given you, I'll entertain a motion to approve all the budgets in one motion. We're not having to prove each of them. The appropriation resolution and the property tax resolution and the nonprofit resolution, I'll have to have individual votes on those. But everything else, if you're good with, we'll move forward. In your pocket, you've got the general fund. You can see that we're we've given three percent cost of living. We're going in the hole a hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. We have covered everything. We've been, we've worked with the sheriff's office and made sure that they've had their step raises in included. The ambulance system has had that that adjustment so we can stay competitive hiring aimless personnel. We have done that with with no tax increase, and you'll see that in just a little bit. And I'll just end that right now. I'm just going to summarize them. And if you got individual questions, and we've gone over this several times, so hopefully now if there's any questions, you've got them. You got them ready. Solid waste fund, that's one sixteen. Has been balanced. Well, that one is. Get you the right numbers. One sixteen's going in is using up the forty-seven thousand dollars. Forty-seven thousand, nine eighty-six, but some of that is equipment purchases. They do have rather robust trans, I mean, hash trash hauling that is going through there. So the revenue looks good, but we will probably hold off on those that purchase until later in the year. When we make sure that we've got the revenue to cover. That is, those are budgeted numbers. Fund one twenty-two is a drug fund. Those ones are seized funds from both federal, state, and local. And that is, this is where that comes from. There's no tax dollars from the county going toward that. The facilities tax fund, as you remember, we spend the money we as we collected the year before. So those dollars being apportioned out to public works, to debt service on the justice complex and debt service on the schools. In addition to a small amount that will go to emergency equipment in the general. That is in your, they are going into, I believe, their fund balance a little bit for some paving needs. And I think they feel like they can handle that, and it looks like it's badly needed. So I think that's that's been covered and that's gone through developments at least once, maybe twice. General purpose school fund, as you can see, that was sent out earlier today. And that has been adjusted so that it reflects the current BEP estimate. It, the one we received, I think was raised about two thousand dollars. If you remember the, when this legislature went back into session, initially, they were putting a cost of living into the BEP that required a match. They came back and said that they would not put us cost of living that lowered the match, and that's what that's reasons back and forth on these numbers. This board has adopted it so that it may beats and also the BEP match so that we're in sync and we're following the commission's resolution on funding at the minimum right now. Well, not part of their budget, I think it's sometime in the future if the schools, the schools do look like they have a relatively healthy fund balance. But not being able to tell exactly what's coming through on the COVID, there may be at some point in time, some requests for some help on an issue or so. We'll keep you advised of that, and that will probably down further along the road. That is not in this budget right now. Fund one fifty-one is their debt service, and all those bills are being paid. And we're keeping a healthy fund balance there. The next item would be nonprofit resolution, as we've gone through budgets to to end of two organizations this year are being removed from that because we are going back with a sort of service contract of sorts. Fay cares will be providing. And I, the name escapes me for the program that basically deals with the domestic violence and the police officers and provides it on night and while it's actually happening so that they can address those situations.
Lethal assessment.
Lethality.
Valleys. Thank you. The second organization is Commission on Aging for Fay County. They have a match that's being required from their funding agency, the Aging Commission of the Mid-South. And be able to get reports as to how that those funds are being spent and what projects are going, will be making that match, and they'll report to us as how that's being handled. Property tax resolution is the breakdown is in your pocket, and that number, the final number does not change from last year. And appropriation resolution is a catch-all resolution of everything that we've talked about tonight and for the last six months. Basically puts that in a resolution form so that we can operate going forward. Does anybody have any specific questions or anything I need to go over?
I do, Norton. Mr. Mayor, back to the school budget and the BEP. Maybe I didn't understand you correctly, but they they removed the cost of living for the employees, which in fact lowered that, causing our match to be lowered. Does, do I? Am I to understand that they're not going to get a cost of living increase?
I don't know what the schools have instituted, one point five. Dr. Smith is telling me one point five percent increase. Rather, hold on a second.
We are proposing commissioner a one point five for credentialed licensed employees as opposed to what we thought we were going to get three percent. And the governor, you know, has pulled out, and we don't, we didn't get our two percent. So we're looking at one point five cost of living. And and that's what we're proposing in this budget.
Wow. Wow.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Leggett. Commissioner Leggett.
I'm sure, I'm sure you don't have the number, but I'm, I'm, I think I'm in agreement with Jim Norton on this. I would love to see our teachers get three percent. And I don't know what that cost is to our fund balance. If we, if we attach the one and a half percent along with the schools to make it three percent for the certified teachers like we're giving the rest of the county employees. But because I know that Commissioner Oglesby, a couple of months ago, we wanted to keep the tax rate the same, which we've accomplished that, and you're to be commended for that. And not go into our fund balance more than four hundred. And you've accomplished that. Again, I thank you. But I, I don't want to send a message to our teachers that have done so good in the school system to bring our school system to where it is now, something that we can be proud of. And 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 give it to everybody else in the county and not give it to them. I guess what I'm asking is what would, I wonder what that would cost, and I I don't imagine you're prepared to give that number right now.
Well, let me put it this way. I don't know that number. So what I'm going to give you are extremely round numbers that are probably going to definitely be off, but it's something to work with. And if you increase, if you added a another one point. You added another one point five. And here's, here's how I'm arriving at this, so you know what I'm looking at. I've taken their entire budget of twenty-nine million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. And just because anywhere between sixty and seventy-five percent is generally employee cost of some flavor. I've taken the sixty percent dollar, and we're looking at right about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for that one and a half percent. Now, keep in mind that if it had been funded in the BEP, it would have been a three quarters, I believe, on the state and one quarter in the local. So three quarters of this would have gone to the state. So those are, those are the numbers I'm looking at. So we've got about a hundred and seventy thousand in our general fund that we're in the hole at the moment. If if you wanted to go down this road, that would be about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. If my number is anywhere near correct, that will be going in the hole.
I think, I think we should consider that because it is very closely aligned with what Commissioner Oglesby requested beginning. And I mean, we're, we're right, we're real close to that number that that we kind of saddled you with going into the budget. And I just, I just hate to leave our teachers out.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll yield to Commissioner Oglesby since he he was the one that brought that up.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I've got a question. What about the non-certificated people? I didn't hear that they were covered either.
Non-certificated.
Non-certificated.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you need to add to your total.
The non-certificated would receive a five hundred dollar, I believe, of amount annually. And Dr. Watkins will correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe that was for non-certificated. All of this is remembering that our medical costs are going up two percent. But Dr. Watkins, correct me on this. She's on the line.
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Connie, the non-certificated staff would see, receive a years of service bonus, just as they did on last year. Zero to five years will receive two hundred and fifty dollars. Six to ten years receive five hundred. And eleven plus years will receive seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
And just give you, just go back on my math again. What I did, I took the total budget, so it wasn't broken down by any category. And like I said, it's extremely rough, but it's an idea.
Mayor Taylor, Commissioner Powers.
Powers.
Are Dr. Smith or Dr. Watkins able to give us a closer figure on that, seeing as they already have figured in what their one and a half percent is? If they know what their one and a half percent is that they added to their budget for the certified personnel, that would give us a number that we could work with.
Dr. Watkins, I believe we had that that one point five percent for our certificated staff. You have that figure with you?
Yes, I'm actually pulling up that figure now.
Mayor, I got a question.
Commissioner Farley.
And I'm confused, so don't take this wrong. But up until then, I thought the school board and the school management decided their budget and brought it to us complete for our approval. Are we now trying to manage their money instead of allowing them to manage their money?
We, let me put it this way, any dollars that we put into the school budget with whatever intention can be used as the school board sees fit. We at least preface that.
Right, and they're coming to us with an amount they're asking us for, and we're telling them that we don't like that amount. We want to add more to it because they're doing it, not doing it the way we want. So we're technically, are we managing their money instead of just funding them?
You can, I guess you can't tell them how to spend it. But you can offer it to them, and I guess a good faith effort would be that they spend it the way it was intended, so.
Mr. Chairman.
One quick question. Commissioner Norton was after I saw his hand up.
Yes. I'd like to ask Dr. Smith, is this five hundred dollars or seven fifty, whichever category you fall in? Where does that lie in the one and a half percent that you're offering to the credentialed teachers?
Yes, so that's in addition to, you've got certificated employees, which are the licensed teachers. And for them, we were proposing, when we looked at the the funds we had on hand, the one point five rather than the three percent that that was talked about before Christmas, before COVID. Now, the non-certificated, that is maintenance workers, bus drivers, and that group. I said five hundred dollars because that's kind of an average in my mind, but some would have an annual amount of two hundred and fifty. Depends on where they are in the length of time they've been employed. So the longer they've been employed, the higher they amount they accrue. So some would be two fifty, and as Dr. Watkins said, some might be five hundred per year. And then some might be seven fifty, let's say if they've been there twenty-five or thirty years.
Okay, I understand that.
That's.
Understand that. Now, Mr. Mayor, you'll probably have to correct me on this if I'm wrong. But I thought when I voted on last year's budget, when we increased the longevity pay for county employees. I specifically asked, is that all county employees? Now, I could be wrong, but doesn't the school, they don't work for the county?
They don't, they don't work for you or me. They work for the school board essentially, so.
Who writes the check? Who writes the paycheck?
School board. They do not, they do not come through this office.
Mr. Chairman.
So now, now I'm understanding that we got, we've got credentialed employees getting a flat one and a half percent. And we're going to have non-credentialed employees getting one and a half percent plus whatever they're referring to their bonus as.
We have, we have no employees. None of them are our employees.
I'm not, I'm not speaking to our employees. I'm speaking to their employees. However, it is our money.
Let me, let me back up a second because you're probably confusing apples and apple, apple and oranges. Dr. Connie's here, and she can correct me if I'm wrong. The ones who are getting the longevity pay are probably your your hourly workers and your cafeteria workers and your janitorial staff, the lower paid scale on there. So those folks are getting that cost of living, the one and a half, plus this stipend. These are your degree teachers, the people who have gone through college, they're the actual teachers, the administrators. Those are getting, and the pay is reflective of their educational qualifications and responsibilities. So that I think what the school board is trying to do is get some real dollars into some of the folks who are on the lower ends pocket. And that was what they handled. Now, going back to county employees, county employees are just that. They're not school board employees. The school board employees are not ours, so by the budgets, there's probably about forty million dollars-ish, somewhere in that area that goes through the school board in one flavor or another. And then everybody else, everything from sheriff's office to my office, to the ambulance, to courthouse employees.
Mayor Taylor.
Commissioner Watkins, I mean, Ms. Watkins, Dr. Watkins.
Could I make one clarification with that? The classified personnel, they will not receive the one point five percent plus a years of service bonus. They will only receive the years of service bonus, not one point five percent.
Just longevity, as what we call it.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
A certificated, certificated get the one point five and longevity?
No, sir. So apparently one gets one, one gets the other. So apparently one gets one, one gets the other.
Okay. So essentially the burden, the, the burden lies on the school board.
Correct. Exactly. Commissioner Oglesby, your hand is up, been up for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I've got to agree with my fellow commissioner, Mr. Farley. We're, we're getting over into their business and they certainly have the authority and the discretion to pass whatever cost of living that they want to do. They've got a fund balance that, that is pretty well equal to our own. And they can certainly afford to do whatever they want to do. I, I really urge you to. I think the county commission needs to stay out of their business. Thank you.
All right, folks. I'll entertain a motion for
Powers, entertain a motion to approve all of the fund balances.
Time out. Thank you much. We're, we're moving on. All right, Commissioner Powers, you got a motion?
Yes, sir. To approve all of the funds that can be lumped together.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do I have a second to that?
Parkin, second.
All right, Commissioner Parkin, Commissioner Powers, and then Commissioner Parkin. That is for the approval of all the budgets.
All of them.
All of them. So I'll just do this from, I'll just modify this right here. I will. Give me one second. The motion is to adopt all, let me give my agenda. The motion is to adopt the budgets as presented for funds 140, 101 general fund, 116 solid waste fund, 122 drug fund, 125 adequate facilities tax fund, 131 public works fund, 141 general purpose school fund, 142 federal projects fund for schools, 143 schools, central cafeteria fund, 151 debt service fund, and 171 capital projects fund. Commissioner Powers, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
If there's no further questions, I'll have a roll call.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
All right, on the school board money, percentage out of sales tax remain the same as what it was last year? Percentage out of property and sales tax?
The, the sales tax portion, it is what it is. There's a lump sum number. And the, on the property tax, I think it's actually maybe a tad smaller, but it's, it's no greater than it was last year.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions? Commissioner Watkins wants you to know that he'd like for them to come back later. I'm assuming the school board.
So before they go to the board. Bypassed our committee. And they didn't have our request on it to come.
If they were, I guess I'm, I'm paraphrasing. So you tell me if I'm wrong, that they, if they want to come back in front of the board with y'all next month in education, present a proposal. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. We, we won't then before we approve.
Oh, I understand. I'm just trying to make, I'm just trying to make sure I'm getting the comment correct. All right, folks, the motion on the table is approve those budgets. If you're in favor, please vote yes when your name is called.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Parkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Ray Seals? Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Motion passes 17 in favor, one against. Uh, the next item on the agenda tonight is nonprofit resolution that is in your packet. Do you entertain a, approved?
Make so motion, Mayor.
Mr. Farley?
Second, Reeves.
Okay. All right, if you're in favor, please vote yes when your name is called. Commissioner Dacus?
Question.
Yes, yes.
Yes, good question.
I have a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
I thought we were going to try to put these under an elected official.
They will be.
Did that not, did that not happen?
They did. The, the lethology assessment will be going to the sheriff's office. And then the other will be going to my office. And then I'll put in both of those, they'll, they'll report to them as to how they're doing. And then the commissioner on aging will be reporting to us, to my office, and then I'll report to the commission.
Well, I mean, why doesn't it just appear in those elected officials' budgets instead of calling this a nonprofit?
Because those
Service for the county, then they need to be overseen by, somebody needs to be responsible for it.
Give me a second. Let me bring up my resolution so I can read it because I have a budget packet down here somewhere. Charles, you on the phone call tonight?
Yes, sir, I am. They're on page 159 in the main packet. And the, the two that are on there would be Dewitt Community Coalition and Fayette County Literacy Council that, that were not put under an elected official.
Okay. Commissioner Leggett is, what we tried to do is what I think the commission wanted to do was try to tear these down as much as possible and work these folks with contracts and do just as you said. And I think that's what we're, we're moving toward. These other two, we have not been able to do so yet, but we will continue to try to structure something that will. And we have gotten these down to 18,500. If you remember a few years back, we were up around 70, 75,000. So we're moving those out. And I expect some more progress between now and next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Folks, we do have a motion on the table. Find my pen. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
No.
Commissioner Leggett?
No.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Parkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Absane.
Yeah. Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Does anyone wish to change their vote? Wish to change their vote, the vote I have is 15 in favor, two against, and one abstentions. The vote passes. Uh, the next item on the agenda tonight is property tax rate. That is in your packet. Paid after the one we just looked at on page 161. Just to go over those numbers again, general fund is 0.9 or 97.736 of a dollar. Well, uh, public works is 0.0511 of a dollar. And general public schools is 0.4827 of a dollar for a tax rate of $1.50, 50 0.74 cents, dollar. Uh, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved for the adoption of this tax rate.
I'll second that, Norton.
Commissioner Oglesby, and I heard Commissioner Norton's name. I, yes, if you're in favor, no, against, again, if you, when your name is called. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Parkins?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed, Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 18 in favor, none against. Commissioner Oglesby?
Just as a, as a little bit of information, this is 29 years the Fayette County tax rate has not been increased, property tax. Thank you.
Yes, sir. It's been a while. Yes, sir. And things have, things have grown on. Uh, we're doing, doing well. Uh, the next item on the agenda tonight is appropriation resolution. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a resolution that summarizes everything we've done so far. And it's one we'll be turning into the state to signify that we've adopted the budget.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Commissioner Farley and Commissioner, who was the second one?
Reeves.
Commissioner Reeves, all right. One second, please. Do this appropriation. All right. Yes, if you're in favor, no if you're against. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Parkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Your Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Uh, does anyone wish to change their vote? Motion passes 18 in favor, none against. Uh, folks, I believe that we have done everything we're supposed to tonight. There's some additional information at the back of your packet.
What about their attorney contract?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, sir. I'm glad you put that. I'm sorry.
I make, I make a motion, we renew the attorney's contract.
I'll second that, Norton.
Okay, thank you very much for both of those. And this will be a roll call vote. This is based, let me summarize what you look talking about there. Contracts, we did not ratify, but we've been operating under. And basically the contract was any cost of living was added to employees' contract, basically just the last year and current year. So that was sent out earlier today in email. I believe that's why most of y'all have it and some may not. But anyways, just put it in form. So that has been by Commissioner Farley and Commissioner Norton. All right, there's also be a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
No.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Parkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers? Absane, yes, sir. Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice? Commissioner Rice?
She's frozen.
She, Commissioner Rice, she's not muted.
Yes, she is.
She is muted.
Still here?
Yes, she muted. And frozen.
Find her phone. Here we go.
She's not froze. She sure can't stand still for a long time.
All right, Commissioner, Commissioner Rice? Technology is such a wonderful thing. I'd say call in the phone. I tell you what, if you can give me a call in my cell, I'll take your vote. I'm gonna go on to the next one if you can call in just the next second. Uh, Commissioner Ray Seals? Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Right. Uh, does anybody wish to change their vote? And Commissioner Rice? Not there. So all right. One against, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, it's Norton. I'm talking Ms. Rice on the phone. She does vote affirmative on the roster.
I'll, I'll take your word for it. In that case, the, the the number is 17 in favor, one against, one motion passes. Uh, any other business we need to bring in front of the commission tonight? Uh, entertain a motion adjourned.
Don't move.
Uh, motions made, all in favor, please hang up.